Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, July 25, 2023, and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors, and I would invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I would enter, and Latifa Faisal has also joined us via Zoom. She's at conference right now. Good morning, Latifa.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great.
I would entertain a motion for adoption of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Heavens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda's adopted. Next, we'll go to public comment number one. This comment period is for public to address topics on today's agenda. And I do have three cards here, but I think you're wanting to talk later on when we do the C2C plan. Is that correct? Okay, so you will have a chance to speak later. And I'll just tell you right now, we're going to allow three minutes per speaker. But is there anybody here or online who wanted to address any comments, any topics on today's agenda other than the C2C plan? Okay, not a close public comment number one. We'll go on agents' reports. We have none. Next, we have the minutes of the July 18, 2023 meeting. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Faisal.
Aye.
Heavens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye, approved. Next, we have personnel actions, and I would entertain a motion.
I move approval personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Heavens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. We'll go on to consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I would move approval of items on consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, then Faisal.
Aye.
Heavens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We have consent agenda approved. Okay, we'll through those. Next, we have public hearing items, of which we have one, which is discussion and consideration of Resolution 24-01, amending the cornerstone to capstone comprehensive plan. And we have people who are going, well, here's what we're going to do. We have presentations by Andrea Wagner of Planning and Development Department and Leanne Harder, our Special Projects Manager. Then if the supervisors have questions, or the people who made the presentations, we'll ask them. Then I will open the public hearing, give three minutes for everybody, close the public hearing. And then if supervisors have follow-up questions after that, we'll allow time for supervisors to question again. So Andrea, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm doing fine. Bryce, I do have a PowerPoint in the shared folder. That one is Leanne's. Yep, sorry. Yeah, that's the right one. Okay, so on July 12, we took our C2C plan, future land use map update to the Plan and Zoning Commission to have a public hearing on what we received direction on from the Board of Supervisors as to how to map the two-mile area around the city of Ames with expiration of the Ames Urban French Plan. That area was unmapped for our future land use designation. So we needed to amend the map, create future land use designations so that area could be covered by our comp plan once again. So the C2C plan, I believe, as you're well aware, is a guide to decision-making. You know, incorporates these urban expansion areas that municipalities identify through their comp plan process. And so future land use mapping, you know, we, we use it in trying to understand if rezonings are compatible, conditional use permits, things of that nature. So it is truly a guide for staff when we get in development applications within a couple of miles of cities, not just Ames. So this, you know, prevents land use conflicts, you know, not surrounding a community by a wind farm, for instance, if it's in their urban expansion area, things of that nature. So this image here is the currently adopted C2C future land use map. As you can see, you know, Huxley, Nevada, Story City, Gilbert, Zering also, Slater. They have small little bits of blue mapped around their two-mile radius, and that's areas that they've identified as urban expansion. As you can see around Ames, the two-mile radius around the city is blank because we use the French Plan as the future land use designation for that area. So we had mapped it separately, and it was a component of the C2C plan. So urban expansion area, I think we'll touch on this the most. I think this designation generates the most comments. We will, we have a slide about Mayor Hala's letter from Ames. So the urban expansion area, you know, this is, this is pulled from the C2C plan, the verbiage up here. So Story County, all the communities share similar concerns about issues and impacts from development, you know, overlapping regulations, inconsistencies among different land use strategies, and impacts of development on rural and agricultural uses. And so this designation reflects those areas identified by cities as future growth areas for those communities, you know, long-term planning, where they see themselves annexing, growing. So this is just the page from the C2C plan that goes over our different principles. There are eight of them for the urban expansion area designation. We are going to focus on the first three on the next slide. So principle one, you know, development in the urban expansion area occurs in accordance with the applicable city's, you know, future land use plans and goals. Principle two is to encourage annexation when development is proposed in those areas. And then principle three is that where annexation is not appropriate at that time of a proposal, coordinate a cooperative review slash approval between the county and the city according to the following standards. So development occurs at an urban density or scale using city development standards, and to use conditional rezoning agreements and annexation agreements to ensure that development is built so as to facilitate a seamless transition into the city when the area is annexed. And again, I'll just reiterate, this is, these are principles for all the cities in the county that have urban expansion areas of future land use designation within two miles. So this is just, you know, some more pages from the C2C plan showing that we do have a portion that summarizes the comprehensive plans for each city in the county that has adopted a comprehensive plan. Okay, so some future land use map amendment background before we look at what we're proposing as the update for this around Ames. So as I already mentioned, the French Plan was an adopted mapped component of the C2C plan. As you're well aware, the French Plan was not renewed this year, negotiation ceased. And so at this point, we do not have future land use designations mapped for the area around Ames. We received direction from you all, Board Supervisors, on May 23 to replace that French Plan mapping. And so following that direction given by the Board, we prepared map updates, a summary of Ames Plan 2040, and how what we've proposed for mapping conflicts with Ames Plan 2040, and removal of references to the Ames Urban French Plan from the C2C plan. As I mentioned, on July 12, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard the map amendment, and they voted on a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Okay, so this is a kind of a zoom-in view of what we've changed for the area around Ames. The blue is the urban expansion area. Green are the natural resource areas that were recently adopted in May. And then light yellow is the rural residential areas. Red is commercial industrial areas. So as you can see, there is quite a bit of urban expansion area. So something to keep in mind in regards to that. So following direction from the Board, we combined Ames Plan 2040's urban reserve overlay and urban growth designation into the urban expansion area designation. So their two designations were combined because we just have the one. We did map the area southwest of Ames, and the Champlin property is agricultural conservation. And we mapped the Meadow Glen rural area south of Ames as rural residential existing. And then north of Ames, between Gilbert, that area between 180th and 190th is mapped as agricultural conservation also. This is just a close-up of southwest of Ames. So as you can see, Meadow Glen is, you know, that yellow area adjacent to city limits, that is rural residential. And then everything else in the southwest, besides some mapped natural areas, is agricultural conservation. And then the north mapping, you can just see that buffer between Gilbert and Ames that's mapped as agricultural conservation. And so this is what the future land use map would look like if adopted, as if we went with the Board's direction for the county as a whole. Okay, so amendments to the text of the plan, and also principle three, which we talked about for the urban area expansion designation. So the Board requested that we clarify language for principle three. Previously just said where annexation is not appropriate, and it didn't specify who was determining whether it was appropriate. So that has been clarified to where the applicable city has identified annexation is not appropriate. And then staff also recommends the removal of all mentions of the Ames Urban French Plan. There were 24 references that were removed. So Ames Plan 2040 summary, so again, we do this for every city that has a comprehensive plan adopted. We summarize it. In this instance, though, there are some conflicts with how we have mapped the future land uses versus how Ames Plan 2040 has mapped them. So that's what this slide is going over. So due to the prime ag lands and the desire by the county in Gilbert for a buffer between Gilbert and Ames, that area between 190th and 180th was mapped as agricultural conservation or proposed to be mapped that way. The Ames 2040 plan shows this as an urban reserve overlay, so that's the difference there. The area southwest of Ames is mapped by the city of Ames as urban reserve overlay in Plan 2040 due to public comment that we received during the French Plan public hearing process. That has been mapped as agricultural conservation in the proposed C2C plan update. Also southwest of Ames, there is a 137-acre property, locally known as Champlin Farms, that is shown as urban growth in Plan 2040. And then again, due to public comment, in the proposed mapping updates for the county, it's mapped as agricultural conservation. Then lastly, as I've mentioned, the Meadow Glen rural residential area, near Champlin property and city limits, that's shown as rural character with the urban reserve overlay in Ames Plan 2040. And we have mapped that simply as rural residential in the C2C plan. And again, that's due to public comment and concern about annexation. Okay, comments for, from the city of Ames. Mayor Hala did send a letter to the Board of Supervisors, so you're all, you know, aware of its contents. But just to provide some additional, you know, context, especially for the public here, so based on that letter, which was included on the Agenda Center, and I believe is an appendix to the staff memo that was included on the Agenda Center. So he's primarily referring to principle three of the urban expansion area designation, where, you know, if annexation is not appropriate, there should be a cooperative review process of development proposals. So from his letter, it looks like Ames is asking for principle three of the urban expansion area to be removed. And for principle two, which only encourages annexation currently, to be changed to require annexation prior to development. And then as previously discussed, the urban expansion area proposed, you know, it includes both the urban growth areas and the urban reserve overlay from Ames Plan 2040. And so from that combination, you have this large amount of urban expansion area. I think what the mayor is calling out there is the land. So if, and you know, he is correct that if a parcel of land were not yet appro-
Andrea, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I lost the sound.
... for annexation to see urban expansion. Is that Latifa?
I'm sorry, I, I lost, I lost the sound when Andrea said she thinks what the mayor is calling out there, and then everything, I thought I lost sound.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, can you hear me, Latifa?
I can. Do you mind repeating that for me? I apologize.
No, that's okay. So his letter was mostly in regards to principle three of the urban expansion area. And so we believe that Ames would like that principle to be removed entirely from the C2C plan. And then for principle two, which only encourages annexation, that that be changed to require annexation prior to development. And then so, as I mentioned, urban expansion area includes the urban reserve overlay and the urban growth designation from Ames Plan 2040. And because of that, there is a large amount mapped as urban expansion area. And from Mayor Hala's letter, there appears to be concern about how that might actually increase land use conflicts. And I have some explanation here on the slide about why, where that's coming from. So in the urban expansion area, let me back up a little bit. In the C2C plan, we have information on what zoning districts are compatible for different future land use designations. In the urban expansion area, the R1 transitional residential, R2 urban residential, RMH residential manufactured housing, commercial light industrial, heavy industrial, green belt conservation, residential mixed-use overlay, those are all deemed compatible with urban expansion areas. So if we got an application for a rezoning in the mapped urban expansion area to one of those districts I listed, that applicant would not have to do a C2C plan amendment first as part of the rezoning application. They could just request the rezoning. And we would find, you know, if it's one of those districts, that it would be compatible with urban expansion area. Any questions on that slide before I move on?
No, thank you.
Okay, so now to the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation from July 12. So they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed updates with one addition of mapping the area bound by North 500 Avenue on the west, Cameron School Road on the north, North Dakota Avenue on the east, and 215th Street on the south as an agricultural conservation area. In the original proposed update as directed by the Board of Supervisors, this was proposed to be mapped as urban expansion area. So due to this, staff have provided two resolutions for the Board's consideration. One that approves the updates to the C2C land, future land use map, as originally directed by you all. And then an alternative resolution that would amend the proposed map updates in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So yes, so this slide just shows the amended map based on the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. So you can see just in kind of the northwest of Ames, there is less urban expansion area, more agricultural conservation. We would ask the Board, if you're going to consider that option, to also consider directing us to map our one zoned properties as rural residential because those were just included under this blanket of agricultural conservation area by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then those are the alternatives before the Board, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did Planning and Zoning Commission hear from anybody who lived in that area?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, because when I, when I looked at the materials that were provided, it said there was no discussion. So I, I'm kind of at a loss that that just kind of popped in at the last minute without any public comment, or there's nothing we talked about at any of our meetings.
Right, the only rationale that the Commissioner who put that amendment forth provided was that there is a significant amount of Iowa state-owned land in that area. But other than that, there were no
Okay.
discussion points.
That's helpful. I appreciate it.
Andrea, I do have a question. With the elimination of principle three and principle two, same referencing that, I believe it was that a requirement for annexation versus just an encouragement. That for development, does that increase the possibility, I guess, heighten the possibility even further for Ames to, if they want to develop in an area, to just say, we're going to go ahead and annex. I, you know, I know they already have that ability to annex within a
Right, yeah.
I'm just wondering, is that the message that we'd be saying is basically, yes, go ahead. You want to develop here, go ahead and annex.
Right, I think more of the concern was that the urban expansion area would facilitate rural development that would not be in line in the long run with the city of Ames plans, not necessarily that they are prepared to annex everything listed as urban reserve, urban growth. So if there was a requirement that annexation occur in the city, you know, wasn't ready yet, but that was a principle, you know, for development proposals to go through, that would essentially, that could stop a development application if they weren't ready to annex.
Okay, so there's possibly there'd be no development or limit, more limited development in the rural area if Ames ready.
Right. And so again, this wouldn't be a principle just in regards to city of Ames, it'd be any city. So I should, yeah, clarify what I said there.
All of the city.
Correct, because those principles are for each community in the county. So Nevada, Huxley, Zering has a little bit mapped, Story City, Gilbert, they would all be affected by that, those principles being changed. They're not specific to Ames.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
And it would be within the two-mile areas around the cities.
Right, if they have mapped urban expansion on the C2C plan map.
Andrea, this is Latifa. So what would, what would the impact be on a landowner who lives in the fringe of any city and wants to, so cities retain division authority? What, what would be the situation, or what would it? Trying to figure out how to, how to frame my question correctly. If a landowner wanted to put up a personal business or, or something, and they live in the fringe, they're not looking to divide their land, but they want to start, you know, a, a small business. Does that mean that they have to be annexed into the city? The city has to agree to annex them in, or they're not allowed to do that?
So if we went with Mayor Hala's suggestions, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so if they had to rezone to have the business, like to commercial light industrial, A2 agribusiness district, that's not deemed compatible with urban expansion areas. You know, if they just had a home business, you know, that would fall, you know, entirely under our jurisdiction regulations. If they wanted to rezone, you know, Ames doesn't have any say in whether rezonings get approved. So, you know, we could take that on as the county. But, you know, with these principles, that, you know, if it's not, if annexation isn't appropriate. I mean, yeah, so they couldn't stop the, or the rezoning. But essentially, if they did want to subdivide it later, that is where the city of Ames would have division review authority.
You want to add something?
I'll just add just a technical note here, just to kind of, because this is a tricky thing to wrap our heads around, right?
Right.
Um, so the way the C2C plan is written and has been presented to you by staff with principles two and three, encourage annexation in urban expansion. And then principle three is, when annexation is not appropriate, coordinate with the city. Because cities still hold subdivision review authority, rezonings to a residential district that would require a subdivision, the city still has a certain level of authority over. So really, the, the question, I think that, the issue that Mayor Hala stated in his letter was more about individual commercial rezonings that do not necessitate the subdivision of land. The county would have full review authority over that. The way the C2C plan has been presented to you, there's an expectation that we'd have some level of coordination. But the rezoning would likely be considered compatible to a commercial or industrial designation. And so I, I think what the change that the city has asked for is to change our policies to prevent that. The, the issue where we have a commercial rezoning request for a single lot of land in urban expansion, so it's considered what's compatible with the C2C plan, and they do not need a subdivision. They're asking us to change our policies so that they would have to annex first to avoid that situation.
So is there a way to write this so that that is more clear? That it, that, that is specifically what we're talking about instead of being super vague and, and setting up a situation where there's spillover of restrictions onto other uses or other, or, you know?
Sure, and, and just to clarify, what we've, what staff has presented didn't involve any changes to those sections.
You're not recommending that section be changed.
No, no, we're, we're, we took the direction you gave us.
To me, like it really, we need to talk about it more, because it's, yeah.
So we didn't
If we're going to consider it, you're not even suggesting.
Okay, we're not suggesting it.
Okay, okay. Right. Thanks.
Supervisors, do you, did you have anything else, Andrea?
Um, no, I did just want to mention, you know, it was in the memo, but it's not in the PowerPoint slides. So Mayor Hala did mention, you know, this possibility of renewing talks on a 28E agreement. That is not what we're discussing or bringing forward today. If the Board would like to direct staff to bring further information on that at a future date, we can do so. Or you can direct us to put on our 2024 work program.
I don't, I'm not suggesting any direction for staff at this time. Anybody else? Okay, we'll let it, we'll leave it there for now then. Any other questions for Andrea about what she's presented?
I don't have this particular time. I might after hearing other people speak, but.
Okay.
Me either.
Let's see, we also have Leanne Harder on, and she's going to present also on the C2C. And I think we'd like to hear from Leanne first and have all the staff presentations done before we open the public hearing. So, thank you, Andrea.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
I'm a little, you're, you're a little low, maybe a little louder.
Um, I, is that any better?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, and I apologize, I don't have my webcam with me. So you're going to just have to see the presentation and my name. I have the, Bryce is going to share some of my slides. Did you go to slide number 13, Bryce? Yep, you did. We're going to just start on this one. This is the annual review, the Board of Supervisors. When you adopted the cornerstone to capstone plan in 2015, 2016, noted that it would be reviewed each year to, to look and see whether the goals and major recommendations remain the direction which Story County wants to proceed, and also look at the implementation matrix and do a chart and check in on how we're progressing towards completing priorities. And then a general view of the trends and necessary amendments as needed. Bryce, if you could go to the next one, please. So we started this annual review, actually, to be perfectly candid, a couple of years ago. We are behind on the annual review due to few things, COVID and the pandemic being one of them, and then staff changes being another one. And then the last part, we initially anticipated bringing this, my part of this to the Board in earlier this spring, in March and April, with the discussions and the resolution on the Ames Urban Fringe- With the discussions and the resolution on the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. We really halted this annual review so that that could proceed. And now that that has been finalized, we can bring forward these changes in one complete package. The timing does allow staff to bring this in a more comprehensive approach rather than piecemealing it. But for the annual review part, what we look at, we look at, and when I say we, I mean staff. It's staff from Planning and Development, Engineering, Secondary Roads, Conservation, and then Board of Supervisors. We look at the goals and major recommendations to, in the C two C plan. We ask ourselves, are these accomplished? Are they still relevant? Has enough changed since the initial adoption? And doesn't maintain, is it still a high priority for the particular year in which it was assigned in the implementation matrix? Next slide, please. So just really quick for those in the audience and a reminder for everyone. The C two C plan has goals, it has objectives, and then has strategies. And then those strategies go a step further and those become implementation tasks or tasks and action steps in the implementation matrix that is an adopted component of the C two C plan. Next slide, please. The implementation matrix has, and these go back to the initial adoption in November of 2016. But immediate, medium, long term, and the annual ongoing timeframes. And then the next slide. So I'm going, are there any questions as to background up to this point? Because I'm going to just jump into the changes if there are none.
Go ahead.
Okay. So chapter two, and I don't have a slide for chapter one, but I should know on chapter one. And this is all outlined in the memo that was included on the agenda and then presented to the board as well. We added some cleanup in chapter one that we added goals to climate change, climate resiliency and diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Those had not previously been in chapter one, the introduction. And chapter two, which is this slide, we simply are just adding appendix G to the cover page. Next slide. Then we go to chapter three. This is really the foundation chapter of the C two C plan. It sets forth the vision, it sets forth the overall vision and goals for the plan. So in this chapter, we did a number of changes. Again, adding goal statements for climate resiliency and diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging. We revised strategies related to the infrastructure and then also removed references in this section to the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Next slide, please. In chapter four, really the only change is adding the, the clarification and adding the appendices to the table of comments. Going to chapter five. Some cleanup to the land use goals. And initially, when we brought this forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Story County Conservation Board in March and April, there were some questions of the, from the Conservation Board that had to take a step back and look at some of the proposed revisions we had proposed, we had suggested. I really appreciate the comments from the Conservation Board because that, because that allowed staff to pause for a break. And we revisit what we're suggesting. And so we kind of tweaked it a little bit from that point. Those were revisions to land use goals two and three. We did again in this chapter revise the maps so that reflects the removal of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Chapter six, which is the next slide, the only change on this is the cover page again, adding the appendix. Same with chapter seven, which is the next slide. Although we did update some of the transportation elements. Specifically, some of the, the 911 map and the, the improvements are scheduled by the Iowa DOT. And then can you go to the next slide, please? The appendices are kind of a major change. Took the opportunity, the Planning and Zoning Department took the opportunity with this delay to go in and revisit appendix A, which is a community indicators. When you think about the, when the plan was developed as 2015, 2016, we were using 2010 census figures. Now, community indicators and appendix A has, has been updated to include 2020 census figures. And then update various sections regarding that. Expand on areas that we had not covered previously, such as the unincorporated growth section, which is section eight, A four. Added additional information regarding watersheds, watershed management, telecommunications facilities. Really, planning and development took a very comprehensive approach to this appendix. So it really does really kind of coincide with where we are right now in, in 2023, rather than seven years ago. We do add appendix G, the Story County Housing Study to the C two C plan. Just as we have with every time we've adopted a new plan, such as appendix F, which we did a couple of years ago. I will note right here on appendix E, Strategic Plan. At such time that the Board of Supervisors finishes and adopts a revised strategic plan, we'll come back and clean this one up. If you could go to the next slide, please, Bryce. So the next steps, Story County Planning and Development will be, from this point on, really dealing with the changes to C two C plan. Other than I will be tasked with coming back to you on a development, the, the development of the economic development framework and how we approach that. You'll notice I did not recommend or go over any changes for chapter six, Economic Prosperity. That was purposeful. We really felt it needed a, a deep dive into that section. So I will be coming back to the board probably in mid-August with a approach to really design economic development framework that will go back in and revisit that chapter six, four. And then the survey that is in the appendix in the C two C plan. It was originally done when we started the C two C plan development. It was then revisited in 2018. I think since it's five years later, it'd be good to do it again this fall. So I will be coming back to the board on that too with some recommendations. And then obviously, once all the documents are approved, include, including what was just covered by Andrea. We'll have to update all the documents online and reprint the housekeeping items. So if you could go to the next one, please. So just like Andrea, the staffs on the screen are your alternatives and staff recommendations. We do recommend alternative one that you approve, resolution 24 dash zero one. That is an all encompassing resolution that has the changes that were previously discussed by Andrea and then all the, the C two C annual review modifications as well. And with that, are there any questions for me?
I have some, but I'll let the other supervisors go first. Latifah, do you have any questions for Leanne?
I do not at this time. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you did on that, Leanne.
You're welcome.
Lisa? Yeah, Leanne, I do have one question. So on the slide that referenced the urban fringe plan you had in the bullet point. I don't remember what slide that was, but, but did you say that you're just keeping that topic in there? But you, you've taken all that information out, or are you, are you going to eliminate that bullet point?
Everything that's in the plan and the, the C two C annual review that references the Ames Urban Fringe Plan has been removed.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I'm just looking at chapter five, like I said, then the bullet point says Ames Urban Fringe Plan or Ames, Ames Urban Fringe area. I'm assuming you're keeping that in there to say that everything else has been removed at this particular time.
Oh, on the memo? Yeah, it just is removing all the, that's just a summary saying it's removing all the language to it and the strikeouts and underlines.
Okay.
I should have clarified that. That's a good question. Thank you.
This has been a lot of work by both you, Leanne, and Staff and Planning and Development. And I want to thank everybody for doing that. It was kind of difficult to review because there were several documents and you had to kind of go back and forth a lot of times. But I understand since you had two, two different entities working on it, that that probably was necessary. I did have a couple of questions. And one of them is in chapter three, we've added climate resiliency and DEI. And I must admit to getting kind of confused at some points because we also have a strategic plan as well as the C two C plan. And in my mind, I'd kind of been looking at those as the strategic plan is for Story County as in Story County government and basically deals with internal things. And that the C two C kind of looks more external at the whole 570 some square miles of the county and what's going on in the county. You know, and impacts county residents. And I, 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 when DEI in here, I'm seeing a lot of internal employee focus. And I'm wondering if the internal aspects aren't more appropriate in our strategic plan for Story County government. And I've also seen some things in our strategic plan that I'm wondering shouldn't, if they shouldn't be more in the C two C plan. Like ordinances and, and building code kind of issues. So I'm just saying, I, I, I think a lot of things that I would consider internal to Story County government are getting into the C two C plan, which originally was a land development, a development land use plan. So I'm getting confused. I just have to say that. And I, I, I don't know, Leanne or Andrea, if either of you have any, any reaction to that.
I, I can start out. The C two C plan by design took Story County a few steps forward than where we had been prior to 2016. Prior to that, we had only had a land use plan. And so I think you'll continue to see as we go forward with the C two C plan. It, staff recommending that we enlarge the scope of it each and every time. Will likely start adding more information or recommending more information on different initiatives that are coming forward. Climate resiliency is one of those such items. You know, we've done a greenhouse gas inventory for our internal operations. The next logical step for Story County is to do it for everything outside of our internal operations. The Go Green Team, while it's set up to look at again our internal operations. I think all the members have an idea that, or a, yeah, an idea that what we do internally will impact all of Story County as well, not just government. And then for the, the DEIB element. I think, one, we can look at the ARPA funding. This is a step I think the Board of Superv, I would recommend the Board of Supervisors take to make sure that we can answer the US Treasury's questioning at any time that we are focused on DEIB efforts. By incorporating it in our C two C plan, I think speaks volumes. But I do agree with you, Linda, there are some, there will be some natural crossovers between the strategic, strategic plan and now our comp plan, which is our, the C two C plan. When the strategic plan gets adopted, we'll probably just have to go in and clean up too and see where, where is it appropriate to be redundant? Where does it add confusion by being redundant? And, and have a really candid discussion that this is only our internal operations. This is all Story County. But, I mean, we, I think especially climate resiliency. That's not something just that, we can't be doing that in a vacuum. That's all of us. That's just like watersheds. Water doesn't just recognize a county boundary or city boundary. We all need to be in the climate resiliency aspects of it.
I agree with you exactly. And that's one of the reasons why I think it's important which plan things go in. Because which plan it is in guides and directs how you work on the objective. And if it's an external objective, if it's, if it's relating to all Story County residents, we have to make sure that we are, that we're interacting with all Story County residents on that objective. That we're just not looking at it as something that Story County government owns. All of Story County owns it. And I think if we put, and, and I particularly if we put something in our strategic plan that maybe should be in our C two C plan, that's probably where I'm more worried about it or concerned about just how we're, how our planning process is, is set up. You know, and, and in the bottom, the bottom line is, we need to be working on all of this stuff. But we need to think about who we're engaging, who the customers are, and how, how we're getting input from them. And that's why I would, I would say there are some things that I, I've seen some places where I would move things from one of these planning venues to another one, just for that reason. So I just, yeah, so we think about that, not do anything right now, but just think about it as we continue on. Because we have strategic planning going on and we have the C two C plan. And let's make sure they have clear goals and we're not muddying the waters and not putting things in the wrong bucket, so to speak.
Um, I, I think that's really the timing if, if the Board of Supervisors direct staff later this fall to do a survey again or repeat the survey that we've done in the past years, we can add questions to that. I think that could help solidify where plans are, where, where items are strategically placed and appropriately placed and what plans and help us define some priorities too.
Leanne, I have, I have one other question for you. There's a lot of this of your portion and your, your changes in the C two C plan that are updates. Updating demographics, updating things. Can you explain to me what the, maybe what the top two or three policy implications would be of the supervisors adopting these changes? Or are we basically talking about updating the plan? Just updating information?
It really is. From a policy impact, probably the most most important one or most, most one that may bear the most weight is the removal of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Really, because what you're seeing with all my stuff is simply annual, annual updates. Things we should have been and have been doing throughout the, throughout the time we've been going. That notwithstanding adding the climate resiliency and DEIB efforts, because we're silent on those two areas. But whether that has policy implications at this time, I don't know if that's to be determined.
Amelia has something.
Yeah, I see Amelia walking up.
Yep. And I'll just touch on the community indicators part of that. So the community indicators appendancy that we've updated in combination with the survey results that Leanne just spoke about, redoing a survey this fall. Those two pieces are really going to inform the five-year update of the C two C plan in the winter, early spring next year, where we look at the policies, the goals. Is the vision the same with the basis of that public input and updated census data? So beyond what, you know, Leanne just discussed is, you know, the immediately policy changes with the fringe plan. I think that foundation is setting us up for just taking a, a, a five-year, a broader look, a more in-depth look here soon.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate those comments. It helps me. I, I, I didn't see other than the fringe plan. You know, and adding, adding a couple of things to chapter three, I didn't see any big policy things. But I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something because there was a lot to go through.
Yeah, no, there, there really is not.
Okay. Are there any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, and those of you who are here to speak, I'm sure you're, you're here to talk about the urban fringe plan part. So I appreciate your patience as we did the policy walk stuff, so to speak. So without anything else, then I will open the public hearing on the Ames Urban, the amending the cornerstone to capstone comprehensive plan. I will ask, and Bryce will be timing, I will ask that you try to make, keep your comments to three minutes. I will ask, and Bryce will be timing, I will ask that you try to make, keep your comments to three minutes. And I will start with Lynn Camito. Would you come to the table, please? Or do, do we want to use the microphone over there? I guess the microphone is working. I am sorry. Why don't you use that?
Oh, thank you for letting me speak. My comments are not necessarily specifically pertaining to the resolutions.
I'm sorry then, could you state your name and address?
Oh, yes. Lynn Camito, five, five, one, seven Aerosmith Trail. And my comments are not specifically regarding the resolutions you're considering today, but have to do more broadly with the C two C plan and urban fringe plan. Would you prefer I wait until the end or now?
Why don't you go ahead since you're here?
Okay. One is on the, on the issue of doing a survey this fall. I think it's a great idea. I am concerned though that there needs to be more engagement and information on specifics to roll Story County taxpayers in how the C two C plan affects their individual property. And if you survey people without giving them those specifics, it'll affect the quality of the information you're getting back and the engagement in the survey. There's still, I still have questions about how specifically things in the C two C plan affect my property. And so I would like that information before I fill out a survey and I think other residents would as well. So I'm going to go ahead and see if I can. I did type up some comments. I'll see if I can get through them within my three minutes. Regarding the mayor of Ames proposal that annexation be a requirement prior to development of any area mapped as urban expansion. It's important for you to know that the city of Ames considers development to be the division of any parcel into two or more pieces for any reason, regardless of whether or not new construction will result. If the mayor's requested change, the C two C plan is approved, it means no land owner in urban expansion areas will be allowed to split a parcel for any reason with no flexibility or exceptions or input from Story County planning or the resident prior to the city annexation. It could, if you had a resident that wanted to sell a couple of acres to their neighbor and it involved no new construction, no physical changes to the property or to the land use. The city of Ames is going to call that development and say, you can't do it. So it would almost make sense to revisit some of these definitions that are being used, like development and subdivision. Because the city of Ames, their planning department considers any division of a parcel for any reason whatsoever to be development. So I met with the city planning office last week after our meeting here. And just posed the question, if my neighbor who has six acres wants to sell me two acres, would I be allowed to do that? And I'm not in an urban expansion area and their answer was no. Even if there's going to be no change to the property, no construction, it's considered a development proposal. So they're, they're really restricting the ability of property owner rights in a way that seems to be an overreach. So I would just caution you to take that into consideration. I could see, I can imagine Story County taxpayers who have properties in those areas of urban expansion have been really frustrated down the road. When they go to do something pretty straightforward and simple and the city's saying, well, we're going to call that a development, even though there's no new construction involved or no proposed new construction. So I'm hoping, I'll just, I'll just make it short. I think that we do have some opportunities if the two E plan, the twenty eight E plan and the C, and the urban fringe plan are revisited. I think that there are some opportunities there to, to clarify things in a way that result in a better process for your Story County taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Bob Brandt.
Thank you. In the interest of complying with your three minute restriction. I'm going to yield to my wife, who has a prepared statement, which I a hundred percent support.
Rosie Brandt.
Good morning. I'm Rosie Brandt. I live at sixty-three, fourteen, five hundred and tenth Avenue in Story County. I've sent you all an email about my thoughts regarding amending the land use portion of the county C two C plan. Please refer to those thoughts again, as well as those that I'm going to share today. I'm here today to support you in keeping the wording of the amendment dealing with Story County land use in the C two C plan. The same as presented to the Story County Planning and Zoning Commission. That wording was based on your recommendations. Thank you for that action, by the way. And I'm pleased the commission recommended the approval of the amendment as written with one small addition. And by the way, that commissioner also mentioned that she felt there was a lot of good ag land in the area that she wanted added. I also hope you will vote in favor of that amendment to the land use part of the C two C plan today. I know that the city council of Ames has sent a letter to the county regarding this amendment. I almost find it laughable that now they feel, the city of Ames feels that they would come back now and discuss this more with the Story County people. They're even willing to do a new twenty-eight E agreement. Whereas in earlier this year, they were not willing to discuss anything any further with Story County and Gilbert. The Story County Planning and Zoning Commission was not swayed by the requests of Ames. I hope you won't be swayed either. The city of Ames feels it has desires that must be met. They need to understand that the rest of the citizens of Story County also have desires that are just as important to us. Two for me are preventing urban sprawl across our prime farmland. And the possible issues related to values and taxation for continually growing Gilbert School District. I want to mention that it's not just a handful of citizens who have requests regarding Story County land use. For example, when the C two C plan was in development, many county residents spoke of their desires, either in person or by survey. To say they want to keep Story County as rural as possible. When the renewal of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan was first addressed, numerous Story County citizens spoke in person and by survey with that same request. There have been petitions signed by many others asking for the protection of our farm and fragile lands. These are just a few examples of citizen input. Please Board, Ms. Merkin, Ms. Faisal, Ms. Hiddens. Continue to represent those of us outside of the corporate city of Ames. And vote in favor today of amending the land use part of the C two C plan as suggested by you and recommended by the Story County Planning and Zoning Commission. Lastly, I hope our current and future boards of supervisors will use their subdivision authority and land development regulations, our zoning code, to exercise the legal power Story County does have over its land use. Of course, we have to take into consideration farmers who want to retire but have no one to farm their land. Or the family of a deceased landowner who must sell the land in the best way for them, which may lead to urban development. But if cities or housing developers from any city, any city. Or sports figures or other countries, for heaven's sake. Want to buy our prime ag land just to develop it into urban sprawl. I hope our current and future boards of supervisors will use their legal options to say no. Thanks for listening for all you've already done regarding land use in Story County. Thanks for all you will do.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak online or in person? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And ask the supervisors if they have any other questions, if anybody before considering a motion.
I do not have any further questions. Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Supervisor Faisal, did you, were you wanting to make a motion?
My internet is working really slowly and I can't get the memo to pop up again. I'm really sorry.
No, that's, that's fine.
Bryce, could you put the alternative slides back up?
Thank you.
Right, yeah. So alternative one was the, the board approving the proposed changes of the C two C plan as prepared by staff at the direction of the supervisors. Alternative two was the same in addition with the recommended change proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on July twelfth. The third alternative was deny the changes as prepared by staff. The fourth alternative was remanding the proposed changes back to staff for modifications. I summarized.
Thank you. I, I'm happy to make the motion if.
It doesn't matter. I couldn't tell from your facial expressions if you wanted to make, make a motion or want to say anything else. So you might've been just from you trying to get your computer to work.
Probably. Um, I, I, I would move alternative one. Simply because I'm just not familiar enough with the recommended changes in alternative two or additions. So I, I would just like us to have more conversation on the implications of, of those, of that change. So I would move alternative one.
Is there a second?
I will second for the, I'll second.
Sound like a purposes of the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's have discussion of the motion.
The difference between the two is, is between number one and number two is just the addition of the additional area.
Right, changing that area identified by the commission from urban expansion to agricultural conservation. Again, if that is what you'd like to make a motion for. I would suggest also directing us to include our one zoned properties as rural residential because they got covered in that blanket of ag conservation.
And that was one of my concerns about the recommendation is that there is already some residential development considerable in probably the southeast corner there. My other concern about it, quite frankly, was that it had not been looked at. Everything else that we've talked about has gone through considerable public hearing with lots of people involved and, and, and specifically you know, and, and I just didn't feel like with all of the work that we have done, looking at all of these issues, I didn't. And, and I'm not saying this is without merit, but I just felt like adding it in at the last minute felt like an amendment to the process that didn't, it didn't really fit to me. I feel like we've, we spent a lot of time on all the other areas. And it's the question of whether we just go ahead right now and, and accept what we've done or whether we kind of reopen it up again. And I, I guess I felt that. And, and particularly if a lot of it's Iowa state land. Which I know it is. So I, I probably am favoring alternative one for that reason.
Yeah, and just for clarification again, Andrea. If you had to designate the other properties, are ones zoned properties? Just the impact that does.
So they would just change from urban expansion then to rural residential. And we included, I think in the memo, a definition of what that designation is. Let's see, I'll just read it in here. So rural residential areas offer the rural housing market segment choices in the unincorporated areas of the county. They're characterized by residential land uses adapted for rural or agricultural, agricultural setting at low non-urban densities. Urban level services are not provided in these areas and these are not priority areas for infrastructure development. So it wouldn't impact the current land use if that's where the concern is.
Kind of make it similar to Meadow Glen.
Correct, yeah.
Supervisor Faisal, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any other thoughts?
No, not at this time. I, I, I still feel more comfortable going with alternative one at this time.
Supervisor Hiddens, any other thoughts?
No.
Okay.
My questions have been answered.
Okay, so I would ask for a vote on the motion to adopt alternative one. Supervisor Faisal?
Aye.
Supervisor Hiddens?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
And do you need anything else from us?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you, everybody who's done work on this. And we'll have more, I guess. So additional items, we have none. So we'll go on to departmental reports. Anna Henderson, Animal Control and Friends. Animal Control, thank you. Everybody be quiet. The kittens are asleep. No, no, one moved its head.
And their names again are Captain and Tenille.
Rousing chorus of love will keep us together, right?
Well, good morning. Last quarter, our animal intakes jumped up to one hundred and thirty-six, one hundred of these being cats and mostly kittens. We were able to increase our number of foster homes and sent many of them into foster care. Currently, we have around thirty-one kittens in foster care waiting to make weight for their spay neuter surgeries. We adopted out sixty-nine animals and twenty-one were reclaimed by their owners. As of August twentieth, we had eighty-seven cats and kittens and eleven dogs. Animal control calls kept us busy with confined and unconfined stray pickups. We also had several bite cases and welfare checks. The Chase and Tales group held their annual memorial fundraiser, raising a total of six thousand and ninety-eight dollars. The Nevada K Kids presented us with seventeen hundred dollars from the proceeds of their popcorn sales. And the Nevada Public Library held a supply drive for us in June. And then after the success of our Book Buddies event in February, we decided to invite children ages six to twelve to read to the adoptable cats and kittens for the summer. This helps with socializing the animals and prepares them for adoption. Can I answer any questions?
I don't have any.
I don't.
Adifa?
I don't, I don't have any.
Can you see the kittens?
Me? No, I, I can see the backpack, but I'm sure they're adorable kittens. Oh, now you can see them.
They're adorable. They're adorable.
The bright spot of our day. Thank you, Anna.
And Anna, I did hear, and I, I think you probably did hear that there are some pets on RagBri this year. Yeah, so hopefully they'll all be okay and won't need any, but I think that there are plans to take care of any people or pets or whoever. We wanted to make sure that you knew because some of this will be going on. RagBri will be in the unincorporated areas, so you might be called for assistance. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Next is other reports. We have none. And then upcoming agenda items. Supervisor Hiddens, do you have any?
Not yet, no.
Supervisor Faisal?
No, not at this time.
I'm hoping sometime soon to bring letters of support for some grants for some broadband funding, but I don't know that I'll have them next week, probably the week after, but we'll, hopefully we'll get some good information on that and, and have some letters of support that we can write. So next we go to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. And Supervisor Faisal, I'll, I'll start with you. How's Texas?
It is hot. It is super hot. They are not kidding.
They still got the heat dome, huh?
Oh, they do indeed. Yeah, and it's really, it's really alarming. Austin is a beautiful city with just a plethora of things to do and see. But at the same time, the, the homeless population is, it, it's surprising to come from, you know, our, our blessed and fortunate community where I know we have folks that struggle with homelessness and, and and that, you know, those situations at home in Story County. But the scale here is, it's jarring and to see folks walking around in this heat and knowing that they don't have any reprieve or very little reprieve during the day. It, it just really, it's, it's hard to see that kind of struggle and suffering and, and not have better solutions for folks. But they're doing some really cool work down here and really innovative housing ideas for people, though. So, I mean, they're working on it. It's just kind of a culture shock. And they've had several people who, every day they, they find another person who's passed away from, from heat exhaustion or, you know, complications. Anyway, oh, that's really happy stuff I'm giving you today. Other than that, the conference has been amazing. I, as soon as I get off this meeting, I'm gonna grab my bags and get to the airport and should be home tonight. And then I will be back in the office tomorrow afternoon. I'm looking forward to sleeping in my bed and cuddling my dogs and being back at my desk.
Okay, and safe travels. And when you get here, it's gonna be hot.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you'll just be, you'll be right ready for it, okay?
Yeah.
It's getting hot here. So, okay, and safe travels back. Thanks for calling in. Supervisor Hiddens?
Yeah, this afternoon I have a phone call with Ames on their income qualified energy programs. They're looking to partner with MICA and so have some information on that. Wednesday, I have a CICS and Children's Advisory Board meeting. And then I have Transportation Collaboration after that. Thursday, I have a HERDA meeting, then we have a closed session meeting, and then I have CICS in the afternoon. And then Friday, I have a call with the executive director with MICA. And then Monday, Monday, I'm just in the office so far. I do have a MICA meeting that night, but I don't have anything scheduled yet during the day. I'll be in the office, but nothing on the calendar yet. That may change by the end of today.
Okay, thank you. Everybody knows this, but I'll, I'll repeat it. RagBri is coming to town today. And if anybody is listening, if you're talking to anybody who might be around Ames, remind them that this afternoon, people are coming in on E57 from Luther. It's 270th coming to R38 or 510th and up South Dakota and to Iowa State. Both today, this afternoon and tomorrow morning, Highway 30 at South Dakota is, the exits are going to be closed. Also tomorrow, if anybody's coming north from Slater on R38, it'll be diverted to Kelly to Highway 69. And in fact, everybody should just stay away from 510. And the other thing for people to think about is, yes, most of the camping will be done around Iowa State or on Brookside, but there are lots of people staying all over Ames, staying with people. There are going to be bicycles in places one would not expect to have bicycles. So I would suggest anybody, if you're going downtown Ames, going any place, park as far away as possible if you are driving and walk. Because I think it's, I think this is going to be more people, I think, than we've ever seen on RagBri here. And they said there were 30,000 registered, but they had 50, close to 50,000 leaving Sioux City on Monday. They had a lot of people who were not registered. They had a lot of people breaking down. They had a lot of first-time riders. So let's just be extra courteous and just stay off the streets and stay home. I think it's the best thing that we can do. There are a lot of people with Discover Ames, the Chamber of Commerce, county staff, city staff, law enforcement, first responders who have been planning for this for weeks and months, I think now. And they are going to be busy as can be in the next, I would say, 25, 26 hours. And I doubt if then they'll get very much sleep. So if you see any of them, but thank them for all the work they have done. They will be out looking for people who are broken down. They will be out dealing with medical emergencies. And they are, the, all the emergency response folks, all the, those planning folks, they are doing their job incredibly this next day and a half and have been. So thank them, help them, and by Wednesday afternoon, we'll know, we'll know a lot more than we do now about how it went. I have some time this after, this tomorrow or Thursday, I'm going to be going to Mary Really Medical Center and look at their new behavioral health unit that they've remodeled. Have a closed session on Thursday. And Friday, I'm going to be working with some groups again on broadband funding. We have two groups that are working on this right now and we are hoping to get some more funds for our providers to expand broadband throughout rural Story County and parts of Boone County. It's cooperative effort there. I'll be spending probably most of the rest of the week on trying to get some of that in, in line because we have late August as a deadline for that, but it's a lot of work. Monday, I will be meeting with some folks from Bolton and Mink Engineering. Once again, looking at drainage tile wetlands conversions, seeing if there are some things that, they've got some new IDALS. The Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship has some new proposals for us to look at. So hopefully we can figure out how to make the drainage tile wetlands work better for Story County. And I may be bringing something to the supervisors in a few weeks about that. That's all I've got. So if there isn't anything else, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.